Yeah.
The meeting of the Milburn Short Hills Business Organization is hereby called to order. Today's Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Tracy, would you please read the sunshine compliance statement?
Yes. Notice of the time, date, location, and agenda of this meeting to the extent known was provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the commencement of this meeting in the following manner pursuant to the provisions of NJSA ten four three six, the Open Public Meetings Act notice was posted in Town Hall and the township's website by notification to newspapers on December twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two of the schedule for twenty twenty-three and by providing notice to the township clerk.
Thanks Tracy. Would you please stand for the salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Alexa Clark, Tracy Cass Levine here, Jesse Moleman.
Here.
Michael Faravetti.
Here.
Annette Romano.
Here.
Ashley Schultz.
Here.
Richard Wasserman.
Here.
Steven Weiner.
Here.
Jackie Benjou.
Here.
Since we start each meeting with our mission statement, the purpose of a special improvement district is to promote, grow, and support local businesses, property owners, residents, and visitors. Milburn Township Sid Ordnance designates new district management corporation whose mission is to encourage the economic, cultural, and social vitality of Milburn Township through increased marketing invisibility, improved and renewed infrastructure and local business development and engagement. Do we have any minutes for approval?
Uh, yes, minutes from May eighteen.
Okay, they were attached, they're provided to everybody with your packet. So everyone had a chance to review them. Do you have, do you have any corrections or additions, deletions, et cetera? If not, can we have a motion to approve the minutes from May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, please?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Start with our bylaws, governance, finance. I will kick it off. Steve was contacted earlier this week and our member Carlo Caparuva has tendered his resignation. He's citing personal reasons, so I just wanted to take a voice vote. Obviously, this is something of his own will, and I would like to take a voice vote just to accept that resignation. Can I have a motion, please, to accept Carlos' resignation? Second, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trish's report. Stephen.
Thank you. Ah, got it. Can you hear me? Yeah, alright, thank you. Included in your package, we have the, um, our budget summary for, um, it's actually effective May thirty-one. So the balance in our bank, I'll just highlight a few things, but all the details are there for you to review. Balance as in the bank on May thirty-one was one hundred twenty-three thousand five hundred fifty-seven dollars. Just note, I wanted to highlight the special assessment. We are at an eighty-nine percent collected level right now, which is very good, which means we've collected one hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred nineteen dollars out of a total two hundred and four thousand. So that was very good. And just a notation that the town actually owes us some reimbursements for some expenses for streetscape and events and things, so we'll be receiving that very shortly. But overall, coming into the summer, we're in great shape. Any questions?
Great shape is good shape to be in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Um, Mr. Cooper, we have an update on Bear's property suit and an attachment.
Sure, and really just a supplement to my May report. So at our last meeting, I reported on the decision late April in the Bear Properties litigation, plaintiffs had sought an order allowing them to deposit the Sid assessment into court. The court denied that, but we did not have the decision that was placed in the record. That is now in your packet. Certainly worth reading through, consistent with the order, the court found that the plaintiffs hadn't met any of the standards that would be applicable if the procedure was, if the procedure itself was even applicable. So certainly read through it if anybody has any questions about the decision or any elements of it, I'd be happy to talk to you, you know, separately or in closed session.
And just, just a brief comment. This is just one discrete issue. This is not, this is not, I'm gonna ask a question, I know the answer to, but it was on a discrete issue. This is not resolving the case in any.
Yeah, so to be clear, it's not, it's not a decision resolving the entire case question. The decision before the court was their application to allow the plaintiffs to deposit their Sid assessment into court while the court adjudicated the overall decision as whether the ordinance was valid or not. So it was an interim application to the court, we'll call a motion, and that motion was denied. So the case continues. I believe it's about ripe for trial. I'm not exactly sure. The, to also be very clear, Explore Milburn Short Hills is not a party to the litigation. It is between the plaintiffs and the township of Milburn, so I don't know exactly where today it sits in terms of trial readiness, but it's probably getting close there.
Okay, thanks Ryan. Right, uh, Steve, we have our audit report update.
Yes, so I'm expecting within the next week or so to receive the, uh, the draft audit report from our audit firm, which we brought on earlier this year. Uh, we've been at it for about three weeks now. Um, they were in office for one day, um, and then there's been a bunch of paperwork going back and forth. Overall, it's been going quite well and I'm not foreseeing any issues. And once I have that, I will share it with you, and then once we have a finalized version, we'll provide that to the state, we'll provide that to the town, and we'll also provide that to the public via our website, and of course, your login copies. But at this point, I'm just waiting for a finalized document.
Thanks.
And then, no action to take on this next item. I just wanted to make everybody aware that there's a draft document in the rear, the end of your packets. Um, look for what is a board member survey. This is something that Tracy and I had talked about earlier this year, is putting together an online survey for the board specifically to give feedback on our operations. And so this is something that we would like you guys to complete over the summer. You'll get an email with, um, with the online form. Once I build it out, it'll be a multiple choice. You just click agree, disagree, et cetera. Um, and it'll give myself and Amanda some good information going into the governance meeting that we have for our governance committee, which is Stephen, Michael, and myself in late August, and then we'll, if there's any action that needs to be taken, we'll certainly do so. But this will also help inform a lot of our policies and plans going into twenty twenty-four. So you'll get an email with this probably in the next week or two. There's no rush on it, but we'd like to just get everything together over the summertime and we'll take it from there. So I'm just wanting to make you guys aware.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to marketing, branding, and placemaking. Amanda and Steve.
Okay, um, so just some quick updates. The, um, the plants, sorry. So just some quick updates with the planters. Um, we have twenty-seven of them out there that have spring plantings. Birch Hill, we work with them again. Uh, so they had cleaned up and mulched fifty tree picks. And then we're working with Milburn Climate Action that we met through Founding Day. Um, there's six planters in Short Hill Station that we provided the soil and the plants, but they're doing all the labor. As I believe we brought that up at the last meeting. Um, so those plants will grow and then they'll remove them at the end of the season and hope that things will fall. The art alley now has Bachi Court back in, installed for the, the summer, and the selfie box is there as well. So the art alley is kind of in full swing. We have summer outreach campaigns that we've mentioned before. I'll be working with the marketing committee on. Um, one is promotions to the metropolitan residents. Another one is a Getting to Know Milburn series, kind of tips and tricks, you know, the fifteen-minute free parking, that kind of thing. New food establishments, so we'll be working on that during the summer. We have the hurricane preparedness kit. We're gonna update that. We'll send that out to all the businesses, and then we'll also put the updated version on our website. So it's accessible to everyone. And I think that's it. It's up to Steve.
And just an update on the signage project for Lot fourteen. We've been talking about it last couple meetings. Explore has been tasked by the town to oversee that project with a consultant firm. Um, we are very, very close to the end on the, um, on the, the actual parking signs themselves. So Venus says municipal parking with an arrow, everything matches our branding. Um, the only holdup is we've had to go through the engineering department here in town to make sure that all the signage is complying with county requirements. Um, so there can only be certain number of signs on a post. The posts have to be able to, uh, come out of the ground if they're by a vehicle. Um, so there's some technical compliance that we're working through, but, um, all good stuff on that end. And then the marketing committee has been working on the replacing the two welcome to Milburn, Upper Milburn Avenue signs. Um, and I'm gonna chat with Tracy and Lex later tonight, and we'll have a final order to go forward. So, um, overall, I think probably by the time, the next time we meet, everything will be complete.
Alright, Girls Night Out review. I'm gonna I'm gonna try and keep this as brief as possible. Um, very, uh, not yet. So, um, just some highlights. We raised five thousand dollars in cash sponsorships.
That's a little closer to the microphone.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, a little better. Yeah.
Um, okay, so five thousand dollars in cash sponsorships from HurMD, which is a new business that's gonna be opening in August up in Wyoming. Cooperman Barnabas, Evolve Fitness Studio, and Men in Regenerative Institute. Um, a thousand dollars in in-kind sponsorships from Moonshine Modern Supper Club. And then we have our event committee members that are swag bag sponsors. Kelly of Real Style Exchange, Corinne of Real Style Exchange, Nadej of Anya, Vicky of Shalas, and Jean of S L T My Skin. So a lot of support in-kind and financially as well. The next thing I wanted to show you were a couple highlights. We worked with Ms. Mars Town and influenced her for this event as kind of to draw up attention and registration. So just if you wanna, it should be the first link. Not that one. Um, so I made this for them and then they posted it. This has received over five thousand views as of today. So I wanted to work with Ms. Mars Town as well to try and draw people in from that area, especially if they can take the train here. So this was a lot of fun, and it's all part of very consistent branding that I'll show you for the event. The other one is, um, at Jessica Choose, and we worked with our restaurant. She did a really nice job for us, so I wanted to work with her again. Yeah. She just had so much fun. She didn't want to leave. She just started going in every, every door she could. So got her braided on at Real Style, um, Cycle Bar, pop-ups, you name it. And that video has almost four thousand views as of today, that reel. So that was our event coverage. Um, general marketing, yeah, there's, I think we recognized a few people on there. Um, general marketing, we listed, um, the event on Tap into, The Patch, Mommy Poppins, um, our press release list, Explore E-Blast. The businesses individually did a lot of marketing for this event. So they were doing their own E-Blast, that's something they had. Um, I created a lot of templates for them that, again, with this branding and made it available to them, so they didn't have to do a lot of work, and it also all kind of was cohesive. So we shared a lot of stories, uh, from, from individual businesses. Um, and then we had our street banner. It's our first street banner at least that I'm aware of, that we said, it'll be the first of many. And that was wonderful. Um, and HurMD, since they were the signature sponsor, they got to have their look on that, so um, I think that turned out really well. And then we also had live signups. It was Kelly's idea from Real Style to set those up. We did them at Live Breads, Taste Buddy, Shalas, Cycle Bar, Real Style Exchange. And then we also had our traditional posters that I'll show you that were in about two hundred storefronts. Um, I just wanna show some branding items for you. So I'll go over the swag bag, but this is our swag bag. And all those sponsors are on there. This is the poster that we had out. This is just a sample of the, of that signage the day of. So everything was working with these colors, one of our branded colors. And, and then what we did is we made a, a card. So anyone that, everyone that registered or signed up a person was automatically registered to win prizes. But if they wanted to have more chances when they went into shops, they spent money there, they got a sticker. So they could get up to four more chances to be entered into the prize winnings, and we're pulling this tomorrow. So this was another piece. And I think you saw the banner, but it's just the, the banner.
It's kinda small for a banner.
Anyway, so those are just some of the items, uh, otherwise, and the committee was really happy with it. We'll probably keep the silhouette look for next year and just change up, you know, not flowers, something else. So, um, that's just some branding, um, items. Jesse, could you bring up the PDF? So these are just some pictures, highlights that Chris Jordan, a photography, local photographer, um, took at the event. People were just having a great time. Steve and I got a chance to actually walk around and see people in stores. There's just a lot of people around with shopping bags, not just the swag bag. That's HurMD. They're the, gonna be the new business. They, they felt it was very worth it to be in the pop-up area, which I'll, I'll go over. Just a lot of happy faces, and I'll have more statistics on that. The committee and, uh, I guess it was just the committee, uh, we spent probably about five hours stuffing the uh, swag bags, putting the stickers on them. So there's been a lot of labor of love with the event. Live Breads, they did a pizza night. They're doing that on Saturdays and Sundays now, and so they opted to do that during Girls Night Out. They had so many pre-orders, they had to take it off their website. So it was really phenomenal. That's Stella Crispo. She's gonna be performing again in the summer during our concert series, I believe. Um, yeah, Art Avino had a class. I know a few people from Town Hall participated in that. Julie of Splurge, they had the candy strapers again. Um, there were two of them, and this is at Cycle Bar. They had all kinds of stuff going on at Cycle Bar. And then that's a picture of just some of the, uh, the trench coats, which I believe were modeled with the last four days.
And Natasha.
And so the roses here, um, these gentlemen were all handing out roses to people as they were passing by. Um, we went through about three hundred roses and a half down. So it was really wonderful, uh, to see that, and we even put little, those little plastic ends on them with some water and plant food so they could carry them around and not, you know, have a mess. Here's the committee at Moonshine, very happy faces. I think that's it for that. Um, that's, that's just a, a few pictures. We have several. So we had more statistics. We had twenty-nine experiences and or activities. I mentioned Live Breads. Um, at Garden State Hemp, uh, they partnered with S L T My Skin and did CBD facials. Jean said she had so many requests, she, she had to turn people down and try and schedule it for another time. She was just booked, and she also said that this has led to a partnership for another event in the future with Garden State Hemp, which we'd like to see. Um, the ethical mattress, um, he had a lot of fun. I'm sure you all saw the big mattress.
Yes.
Out front, um, uh, due to, uh, the, uh, the smoke and weather conditions, we had to move some people around and it actually worked out really well. The ethical mattress hosted our psychic, so everyone could be sitting inside, and they were literally sitting on the mattresses waiting to see the psychic. Um, and Taste Buddy also relocated there as well, so you could get something to see the psychic. And I know that Brian was really happy with that, that attention in that evening. And then we had over twenty promotions, anything from fifty percent off to, um, free classes, things like that. And then we had our two hundred swag bags, and just to give you a sense, we had so many coupons and offers that we had to binder flip them. Um, I'll leave these here, but, um, we also, Explore's contribution. We did a, uh, the glasses case with our logon. What we looked up, what women most likely put in first, and this was on the list. And then
Older.
And funny, uh, what happened was Barnabas gave us sunglasses. So that worked out really well, and then there's just other things like really great, Joanna and Jody, um, did a fan. Uh, we have some nibbles from Anya and from Splurge, and then a ton more of, of cards, percentage off, free classes, even protein packs. So this was a really robust bag, and this was also number one on the list of things people were excited about besides shopping and promotions in general.
The only thing that yelled at about was every single person wore this swag bag.
Yeah, it's, we made it very clear. It was the first two hundred to pre-register, but, uh, once people see something like this, they want them. So This was a, a pinch hit because the original swag bag, there was a production problem. They didn't ship. So this was an overnight, uh,
It was a great bag.
I meant a lot of very patient sticker, so we made it work.
Yeah.
Um, did you have So
Corinne from Real Style had to, so you, Amanda created that sticker, right? But then Corinne had to literally
And Jean, and Jean.
And each one for two hundred of them.
Yeah.
On what, Tuesday night or something?
That was a lot of patience. Uh, not everyone could do that.
It, it was a great
Oh, yeah, not, yeah. Um, uh, we also had a DJ. We had Stella Crispo that you saw. We had the after-party at Moonshine. We had the trench coat models for, I believe it was seventeen businesses. I mentioned the roses. We had event guides, the prize drawings. I have three laundry baskets full of items from businesses for the raffle bags. Uh, so we have, um, one that's on its own from Alpha Fit Club that's worth over eight hundred. And then we also have two tickets from the Paper Mill, and then, um, Chris Jordan offered a family portrait session.
Wow.
So that's all getting pulled tomorrow. And then some really quick statistics. This is the cool one, and I have it to pass out, because I don't think you'll believe me. Um, the sixty-nine towns or cities were represented in pre-registration.
Sixty-nine.
Wow, sixty-nine, wow.
And less than over six
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine different towns.
Different zip codes.
Oh, different zip codes.
Yeah. Um, pre-register.
Appreciate her this one.
Huh?
How far from
Uh, Wishkill, um, PA.
Wow, that's incredible.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah.
Some way from down.
That was
How, how many people registered overall?
So pre-registration, we had, uh, five hundred twenty, and we ended it, um, I think it was about midnight on June seventh. We, we had another twenty-five or so come in that day alone.
So total number about?
Uh, total number, so that was five twenty pre-registrons. We had seventy walk-ups.
Wow.
And we had approximately five hundred people attending that.
And we captured a lot of their emails and
Right, so, um, we captured that, um, and then we have, you know, permission, we have to ask permission to continue to email them. So we're able to add the majority of them to our email list. Yeah, it, it really was phenomenal. And then, uh, let's see. One other thing was, um, how did people hear about the event? Twenty-eight percent said it was an invitation from a friend. Fifty percent was from an Explore E-Blast, and we had significant write-ins for walk-ons, so that turned out to be a really great
Thank you.
Yes.
Dutch.
Yes, you guys were double teaming. Um, and then tomorrow, we're gonna send out a survey to the businesses about their experience as well to the Tempe East, and we'll do the raffle drawing. And I think that's all I have for Girls Night Out. Does anyone have any questions? Anyone nearby doing anything?
Do you wanna put the mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, it's really, it's, was, it was the next day.
Maplewood, yes.
I thought they were moving into the next week, but I guess not. Um, it's, it's been, it's been coming back. It's been coming back. So Summerville had one. There's been, there's been a lot of them. Um, I don't know that they're to the caliber of ours, um, but we just tried to make every detail matter. And, um, I think it just, it's another kudos to the committee
Yeah.
for, uh, all the energy and ideas and outreach. Um, so I, I think we've got, we talked about, we have a template. We'll just tweet and do it again.
It was fabulous, and you're right, the smiles everywhere. It was just, it was, it was great.
And so many people walking around the town.
A lot of people, right.
A lot, a lot of walking around.
Kudos to the committee.
And even
Worked very hard.
And even people that didn't necessarily participate in Girls Night Out, they were in the restaurants, they were like, what's happening, what's happening? So it was just, um, and, and you also got traction because, uh, I think it was opening night of, for the second night of Paper Mill. So you had a lot of people that were in town for Paper Mill that were just like, what's this, what's this? And like, they can't park in Lot One, and what's going on here?
Right.
So, um, no, but I, I, uh, I think it should be, you know, noteworthy that it was, uh, uh, I thought the, that setup in Lot One for the businesses that, that Yeah, the pop-ups, um, in your afforded businesses that weren't in the downtown to have a presence um, and exposure and participation. I thought that worked out very, very well. I thought the signage was great. I thought, you know, you really looked at every detail. It was like, uh, here's a list, here's another list. So people didn't have to wait if they didn't, to either register or, because there was multiple opportunities for them to go to different people. Um, yes, so I, uh, I wanna say, I thought it was exceptional. And, uh, and thank you to, uh, the, the committee extraordinaire, and thank you to the leadership of the dynamic duo for, uh, knocking it out of the park.
I didn't have much on this. Honestly, I told her I was like
I just told her what to do.
Yeah.
And it helped.
And I was
I was saying, did, oh, sorry, I was just saying, did it to that and just also great job on the marketing.
Yeah.
You know, getting this out in so many different channels.
Yeah.
You know, people, it's great when people are seeing this and all, very different.
And there was a big buzz around the after-hours party, which I was helping with, a lot, a lot of new faces. Uh, let's go to the after-hours party. It was kind of like, uh, it was, it was very hip, and a lot of people were like eager to go, even though, even though it was just, you know, liked food and ended up. Let's go to the after-hours party, it was kind of like, it was, it was very hip, and a lot of people were like eager to go, even though, even though it was just, you know, like food, we ended up.
I think everyone's idea was the psychic, that was very smart, that brought a lot of people to the ethical mattress. Yeah, there was a lot of people, and thank you for creating our location, it was great.
Yeah, rather move you than lose you. So, thank you.
I'll admit, who had more fun then, I had to deal with the auditor. So she's doing Girls Night Out, trying to get into the toilet. Thanks.
Yeah, so really, really happy. Summer event schedules, so I'm, I'm gonna take the Girls Night Out webpage down, and then the live music schedule's gonna go up. Steve already has all of that booked, and that's starting, well, I'll leave that to you. We are gonna have a medical mixer at Corundee in July, so looking forward to that, already had conversations. They are really organized, they have phenomenal marketing, and they already have a waitlist to get in there. So I, I think it's gonna be great for all the other businesses to get exposure to what they're doing.
What is it, what, what is it?
What is the business?
Yeah, what's a medical mixer?
So like the med, the medical businesses in town. To get them together. So, you know.
Do you wanna just say what Corundee is? Yeah.
Yeah, so it's women's health, it's everything you would need except for, they, whatever.
They don't deliver babies.
They don't deliver babies.
Everything else.
Everything else. And they, I went, saw them, they're, they're pretty much done with construction in there, they just gutted the space. They're up in Y and South, right, there was Y and South.
Y and South was the one.
Yeah, and they are very experience-oriented. Anything to make people more comfortable in the space they're in, lovely lobby.
Is this their first outpost, or is this a franchise?
No, this, there's, there's many locations. So anyway, it's a lovely space, but you all get to see that. And then, let's see, we're having our new business mixer anniversary party on August thirty-first, so please mark your calendars. Okay, I did not know that, we are partnering with the Chamber on that. And then the other thing that will really.
Do you have a location yet?
It looks like, at this point, we're gonna probably do Joey's Tap and Tavern across the street. They do have a private party room, but we might do some outdoor experiences as well, so we're just planning that, but we're gonna be working with the Chamber of Commerce, who has a new executive director as of a few weeks ago. And we're gonna do, prior to our party, we're gonna do a business mixer for some of the newer businesses in town, as well as some of their new members, and try to just coordinate that. So it'll be a full evening, but more information will come as we finish the planning process. We usually do it at Boxcar, last two years, we're just gonna switch it up for this year.
And then the, the other thing we're excited about, it's a new concept for us, is a kids' first experience. So a lot of what we do supports the boutiques and the shops, and we really wanna make sure we're supporting, supporting everyone. So this concept is things like a kid's first haircut, a kid's first visit to the dentist, first swim lesson, thing like that. And so what we're gonna do, I already have businesses that wanna work on this, I'm gonna do outreach, is we're gonna create an area at Rocktoberfest where kids can have some type of engaging experience with each table. The idea is to have, give them little superhero capes, and they get like a badge at each station. And then that brings the parents to the businesses, because we're looking at about a two-year-old and five-year-old age range. So it should be, it should be interesting, we'll see how it goes, but that's one way to chip away at the professional services. Yeah, and I think that's it for me.
Terrific, anybody have any comments? With an accolades for you.
I was just saying, I love the, I know we've been talking about it for a while, that we're starting to do these category-specific events, and as we've been saying, a lot of our businesses in our Sid districts are the professional services, especially medical, and I say it's amazing how many kids enrichment type of programs there are now, they're just growing and growing, like a lot of new businesses in here, so I'm excited to do it.
Move along to Jackie and our advisory committee, Seda.
Yes, so, wow, it feels like it was a month ago, and it was, which is a missed year. The Seda Sunday event that was held at the Bauer Center was a Chinese and Indian dance and music showcase. I think some of my board members made an appearance, thank you for coming, certainly. And it was extremely well-attended, we had probably, I don't know, two hundred and fifty, three hundred, between both sets of, of shows, so to speak. We had the, the Chinese performances from one to about two fifteen. Took a little break, and then two thirty to four were the Indian dance performances. We had native snacks in between, it was extremely well-attended. It was just a great, great afternoon at Bauer, I think everyone really enjoyed themselves. It was, it was a free event, so we really harnessed not only our own community, but I know there was a lot of people from ancillary communities that were there as well. Just great, and thank you to Explore for partnering with Cultural Engagement to really make sure it was a very professional execution. You know, in the eleventh hour, Steve made the magic happen, literally with the DJ, and and but it was, it was a great day, and people were really happy to be there. I think that's where we really embraced all the members of our community, so.
And just to piggyback, you know, one of the things we've been talking about is how we can engage especially non-English speakers or non-native speakers, because it is a large major, a large portion of our community. That event was virtually, I would say ninety-eight percent Chinese or Indian. But I had an opportunity to speak to dozens and dozens of people who did not know about our organization, didn't know about Girls Night Out, was really able to engage people who don't normally engage with us on social media or email blasts. So it was a great opportunity to expand the net a bit, so I, I think it was a very prosperous partnership between Seda and Explore, and I think it only helped our Girls Night Out event, because I did see a lot of the same faces from those two events.
Uh, today, I just wanna mention, we had a Juneteenth celebration at the library. The Township of Melbourne partnered with the NAACP of the Oranges and Maplewood, and we had some speeches, a little bit of a highlights of what Juneteenth is. The NAACP, for those, I, I didn't know it until today, actually, was an organization that is a hundred and ten years old and celebrating a milestone. The Maplewood and Oranges chapter is the oldest in New Jersey and the third oldest chapter in the entire organization. So it was, it's quite noteworthy, we were joined today by the president of this, of the chapter, Daryl Jeffries, the membership chair and vice president, Lady Trish Cipio, and William Brown that runs some special programming and scholarship events, so I, I thought it was a terrific afternoon, thank you to Jesse for for working with, with the NAACP of the Oranges to really make that happen, much appreciative. Special thanks to Mike Bannock at the library, there is a very tall banner there now, so please, that's in the window, please go by. The NAACP of the Oranges and Maplewood consists of, it's, it's a little bit of a misnomer, it's not Oranges and Maplewood, it's eleven towns in Essex County, of which Melbourne is one. So grateful for the opportunity, it is the third year that we are celebrating Juneteenth, and I'm grateful that Melbourne participated, I was happy to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Back to Steve, business advocacy. Yes.
So, at the last township committee meeting, we introduced the revisions to the chapter of the municipal code dealing with solid waste recycling. A very comprehensive letter was sent out to every business in town, not just those in the Sid, as well as all property owners that are affected by the change, and I've already received some feedback by it, which is good, and it's definitely percolating. The ordinance is slated for adoption on July eighteenth, and the changes will become effective on September eighteenth. I've reported on this a couple times, so really none of the substantive, you know, elements of it have changed, but all the information is out there. People are digesting it, and so, as always, if anyone that you're talking to on the street that has questions with this stuff, they can always reach out to me.
Jesse, September eighteenth is the key date, that's when businesses have to have their alternate collections in the place.
Exactly.
Okay, so this is our June meeting, so about halfway through the year, and I wanted to just give you guys a recap of where we are in terms of our business education programs. So, so far, we have hosted eight programs or eight sessions, three on multimedia marketing, social media as well as SEO, and then five on business finance and development. That was through a sponsorship from Citizens Bank in partnership with the Union County Economic Development Corporation. We are almost finished, at the end of the month, we will have our ninth and tenth sessions, and then we're done for, for the first half of the year. Overall, it's been, it's been very interesting to see the trends. There has definitely been more interest in the social media and multimedia marketing than the business development. I'm surprised by that somewhat, given that we have data from our engagement last year through a business survey that showed that businesses really do need a lot of education and training on how to fund themselves, how to go after government contracts, et cetera. But I get it, it's also not as interesting as how to make a TikTok real. And so, I, I think as we go forward, we're gonna reevaluate our business education program for next year and probably focus more of our time and effort on the social media and marketing aspect than the business. So, either way, I think overall it's been very successful, I, I don't think you're gonna find another Sid that's executed ten education sessions in six months. But I think going forward, we're probably gonna focus on the multimedia, which is a good lesson learned. So, that is concerning, oh, just as a reminder, Tracy made mention of these industry-specific events, we do have an event coming up on June twenty-eighth with interior motif. If you guys recall, we had a mixer there earlier this year, they're the Home Automation Company on Upper Melbourne Avenue. They're gonna be hosting a continuing education program for architects, and so we've invited architects, interior designers and other folks in that field. We're also partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and Union County EDC to widen the net a bit more and have them invite folks in those spheres that are members of those organizations. So we're hoping that we'll be able to execute that and get a nice turnout as well, so more to come on that. And that is it for me, Richard is up next.
So, thank you very much. So, we had a very, for business advocacy, we, we had a very robust discussion about some of the issues facing, facing the township or facing the downtown that is. And one of the topics we were looking at was zoning for ground floor, ground, ground floor businesses in the B four, which are, which have medical use, could be acupuncture, dentist, chiropractor, so there, there are a number of businesses that would need special planning board approval to have a ground floor, ground floor use. And, and other towns don't, don't have that barrier. So, so there, it was, we had a very wide-ranging discussion over, over is that appropriate for a town? Do, do we, do we need that, or is that something that, that maybe we'd ask, and have to go back to the planning board and discuss that, or, or maybe change, change your ordinance? Because right now, the business wants to come into the, the B four zone, which is here, which is downtown, they'd have to go to the planning board if it's for certain uses like chiropractor.
So medical, medical is currently not permitted in B four.
Correct, for the ground floor.
Ground floor.
For ground floor.
Professional services, so it's not just medical, right, so, you know, so a, a lawyer.
Right.
A financial advisor that's not affiliated with a bank, I mean, there's a lot of things that that are not permitted, that, you know, I understand they may have, had at their time, at the time they were written, but as we all know, the, the, the retail landscape has changed dramatically, and we need to adjust with that as well.
So. I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. A question, the, who are moving here? Are they gonna have retail in the front, or do we not?
They, they have a bank in the front.
Oh, it's a bank.
So the bank allows them to have the ground floor office space. In Chorchoi. Yeah, the whole, the whole floor is Chorchoi, the front is the bank.
So they're moving from their, their location?
So, but yeah, I, I think there, there needs to be a discussion at the mun, at the municipal level, especially with our municipal planner, about are our zoning laws too restrictive? Do we have too much of a focus on parking requirements? I, I think any, any municipality should be looking at reevaluating their zoning periodically, and right now, we have a very retail-friendly zoning, which, you know, as Jackie just explained, I mean, we need to start thinking about other, more diverse industries, especially in the downtown district. So we have some ideas, certainly would love to talk to the municipal planner, who is obviously the expert on this, but it, it probably really needs to come from the TC to authorize the planner to start looking at those types of things.
And as we know, that's the trend, if you go into many towns, walk-in or, you know, you know, walk, walk, yeah, walk-in, you know, walk-in is the way to go, especially for, you know, medical and some other, dirty daycare. Which might be nice in the town. So that's, that's something we, we looked at, and another topic was, for general improvements, the town in the last year or two has asked Explore to help with, with signage, holiday decor. And, and I think that it's something that, that, I think it's the, something that the town really needs, because as we approach the holiday season, if you look at certain parts of, you know, some of the Sid districts, you know, there's not, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of holiday signage, there's not a lot of holiday spirit. And this past year, I know that the town budgeted with, with Explore, you know, maybe two or three thousand dollars to help us, you know, liven up the town for the holidays. I think this is something that, what, what we discussed was, maybe we need a larger budget, maybe we need to really focus on it, and that's something that would help the businesses and help the town, and, but instead of doing it piecemeal, maybe, maybe the town would give Explore a larger budget, and maybe we would be able to experiment, you know, as one of, as one of the stakeholders.
Also, it's not just the downtown, I mean, the, the, it's throughout the five business districts. You know, Mars Turnpike, Upper Melbourne, you know, there's a lot of the, there's train stations, I mean, we all know the five districts, so. But it's, it's something that really needs some budgetary support to really, you know, we're, we're we're, we're a beautiful community, and I think the, the decor and the holiday spirit should be reflected in, during the season, so. This is the perfect thing now, it's June, sorry.
Yeah, no, no.
It's June, and, you know, we're gonna blink, and it's gonna be September, and this, this is the time now where we really should be talking to the TC and that.
Right, hear it.
Yeah.
Right.
Tag, right.
Tag it, tag it.
And, because I think, I, you know, good, good begets good, so one, you know, and we have new neighbors at the Metropolitan, so, and, and you know, they, they may be in Springfield, but that, that whole shopping corridor is all Melbourne. So it's, I think it's really important that we, we really think about this strategically and, and make the commitments with the township to really look at this sooner rather than later, and, and plan accordingly.
And a lot of the decor, you know, if, if Explore, we spirited it, and, and we bought, or, you know, we had certain signage or, or other elements that we brought in, a lot of it's reusable. So it really is an investment, you know, so it's not a one-time shot. So if we did come up with a strategy in terms of, you know, signage and other holiday, you know, holiday elements, it's something that's reusable, you know, which.
There's still snowflakes, or are we moving soldiers, I forgot.
It's been both.
I think, I, I think those are in storage, and I think they came out last year, but, but a lot of those.
Right, they were on life support.
A lot of those are in bad shape. A lot of those are in bad shape.
No, I know, I know.
They, they're being, I think this is one of them.
I'm just trying to think of what that would be. Would it, would it be a, would it be a wooden soldier? Would it be a snowflake?
So, um, a lot of these things, um, we have barriers to work with or work around, which a lot of the poles cannot take some of these things. Um, so depending on the uh, the district, um, also, a lot of this stuff is very expensive. Um, and so it's an investment for the town to make. I believe we should have a strategic plan and phase it in as we can afford to do so. Um, so that everything is consistent. I've also recommended that we get the lighting installed before um Duali, so that um, the majority of the community can enjoy it for all of the holidays. Uh, so I, I, I'm looking forward to, I think we're gonna be setting a meeting with the uh, with the township just to start that conversation, because now is the time here exactly.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you. So would it be something that I would like bring up in new business at a meeting, or would we invite you to a meeting where you can present to the township committee what your thoughts are?
Pre-meeting.
Well, I, I don't, I don't think we're there yet. I think we need to understand from the finance committee perspective what might be available for twenty twenty-three. Um, last year, I think we had maybe four thousand dollars, if that, to spend, which was nothing in a district that is as large as ours.
Yeah, and the resources are important. We're happy to do it. I, 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 we have the ability to do it, we have the skill to do it, but the resources, we can't just take out of our budget and out of our competition.
It matches our mission, right? Um, but you know, we, we have a twenty-five thousand, something like that, streetscaping budget, and most of that is spent, you know, long before the summertime, just on spring planting and things. And so um, I, I think it would be helpful if the town could evaluate what could be available to us financially. Um, and if there's money available in new business and you have this conversation, we can certainly then put together a plan. But I think just really, it's a question of what would the town be willing to provide?
And we may be, we may also be able to work with other stakeholders, like the uh, the education league, or bring in a couple other stakeholders with us and do a great job. But I think one of the points, and Steve just mentioned, is that we want to have like a really great holiday, holiday season. You know, now's the time that we need the approval on the budget and, you know, and we have to start working on it.
So we appreciate it.
Yeah.
And uh, okay, so uh, so uh, that was a second topic. So, and then we went over uh, some of the uh, some parking uh, parking improvements. And uh, we're looking, we, we, we had a, a discussion over all the different types of uh, of parking passes and permits. And uh, there's a, there's a number of different uh permits that are available to uh, in the township. And I think our, I think the thrust was, maybe it's time to really, you know, think it through, streamline this. Um, and um, and instead of having so many different, you know, so many, so many different categories, maybe uh, maybe have fewer categories. And uh, and some of the other discussion that we had was enforcement. Uh, there's a number of issues in terms of uh, in terms of uh, people that are abusing uh, uh, you know, the parking spaces. There are, there are, so there are some people that are continuous offenders, where they, they're parking their, their cars. They should have permits. Uh, it's not enforced. And uh, and now, now it's really hurting the town, because uh, because those, some of those spots should be uh held for retail. And uh, and for customers and visitors from the outside, and those, those spots are being, you know, used uh, you know, used by, by people that should be using them. And we, and, and, and a lot of the discussion was about enforcement and how this goes year to year without, without it being dealt with.
Yeah.
At our, at our last uh parking ad hoc, we talked about the permits. And I believe that Donna said that they were, they were going to look into. You, you suggested it, but they were going to look into.
I'm gonna do it.
You're doing it.
I did it.
You did it. Okay.
That's a nice.
So Jack. I, I also think that. Okay, so I sat on this committee when I was mayor or deputy mayor, or what, I, I remember distinctly the uh, and there, there's like a couple of things that kind of really stick out to me. First of all, I think that we have to start looking at this potentially as a twelve-month, you know, not all businesses start on January first and end on December thirty-first. So when a new business comes in on June fifteenth, they get their permit runs from June fifteenth, twenty twenty, uh whatever it is, through June of twenty twenty-four. It's, it's, it's a twelve-month uh period rather than the calendar year. That's one suggestion. Another suggestion, I think, for example, um, you have an annual business permit, and then you have a semi-annual business permit. You know, once again, if you, you can, you can maybe tweak that a little bit, but I think more importantly, if, if I'm a business owner and I have, you know, two employees plus myself and an owner, that means under this scenario, it's three thirty per business, per permit. So that means I'm almost, I'm spending almost a thousand dollars for myself and my two employees. My feeling is that you should have an annual business permit for, and, and maybe do it in such a way that the second and third are, are somewhat reduced to incentivize businesses to really buy these permits, to take these cars, you know, their business owners' cars off the street. We all know about what happens, and people with feeding the meters and, you know, parking where they shouldn't, and taking the risk to get a thirty-dollar ticket rather than spending and investing in, in these, in a permit. So I think we need to really look at this in terms of how are we going to make it more um, business-friendly for our businesses to, and, 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 and hand in hand, it's going to be more, they're going to be more incentivized to buy the permits because of the enforcement for the, for, for parking is going to be much more. Right. I think we should be penalizing the people that aren't following the rules rather than the people that are spending money in town.
But, but maybe we should, but well, like you said, which is very true, we should be giving our businesses a better deal, you know, a, you know.
To encourage them, right.
Incentivize them that, you know what, get with the program, you're going to pay less, but get the permit and get your cars, you know, in the right spots, you know, instead of taking the retail spaces away from our, from our visitors.
I think even with the permits, they're taking away the retail spaces.
Well, they're not, they're, 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 they're doing.
And it's the same cars. It's the same vendors, because I see them when I'm looking for a parking.
It is the same.
Right.
And that has to, and that has to be dealt with.
No, but yes.
But, and, and really has to be addressed from a law, law enforcement, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I, it's, and quite frankly, it's a revenue issue for the town. I mean, this is, you know, e- especially now that there are less permits for um, for commuters, I would think that that, that is down, which has always been a tremendous driver. This is an opportunity for us to really embrace our business community and, and do the right thing.
Do you want to touch on the, the last parking ad hoc? Because those commuter spots didn't go, there wasn't increase in those commuter spots.
Yeah.
Sure. So and as Annette mentioned, both she and I serve on this committee, and I think our next meeting is in July or August, and I'll, I'll bring these recommendations. One thing that uh Jackie and Richard didn't mention is, um, I propose incentivizing utilizing the parking deck by making that a cheaper business parking pass in other locations. Uh, maybe someone would be willing to walk an extra five minutes if they can save fifty dollars a year, a hundred bucks, you know?
Right.
All of this is to be worked out, but I think we need to start hitting these types of conceptual, conceptual discussions. Um, I think we don't have a parking allocation problem. We have a compliance problem, and we have an enforcement problem. Um, we're working on it as the town, but it needs to come from the TC down, and I think Annette totally gets it, that we have a lot of double parking. We have a lot of people parking, you know, um, in that right turn lane uh by Rockin' Joe's, where we've created no parking, seven to nine and uh, four to six, to try to allow people to make right turns. And then every morning, there's somebody parked there and no enforcement. And so um, we, we, we need to see, there's all the, you have all the policy you want in the world, um, but unless you enforce it, it doesn't matter. And um, I think the good thing is, we're getting a lot of traffic in our town. Uh, we're getting a lot of cars, we're getting a lot of shoppers. But when that happens, you also have to come up um, kind of with a prophylactic to figure out how do we, you know, deal with these issues. And so um, that's, that's a huge part of what we're trying to achieve.
And it is, I mean, you know, a, a letter went out today, I believe, uh, they are going to start enforcing uh, the police, and uh, they're going to start enforcing those double parkers and triple parkers. And I, and I see the police down Main Street ticketing every car that's parked there after four o'clock.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I do.
But it's the morning, too, that has to be addressed, that, that, that rush hour rate. I think that's what you're talking.
Well, I, I, I see them.
The four to six, yeah. The seven to nine.
Yeah.
You know, when, when you're going towards Springfield, and you see that the backup, the line is backed up all the way to ShopRite, because, yeah.
And non-compliance with parking creates congestion. Congestion creates detours. Detours create people not coming to our town, right? And we want people to drive through our town and see our businesses and see our flowerpots and see the activity. If they're avoiding it because the traffic is so onerous, then we're not doing our job as a Sid, and the town is not doing its job as a business ambassador. And so um, I, I think this is a, a real problem that we're working on. Um, hopefully, the recommendations that I'm proposing will get some headway, but um, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a process, but I think it's very important.
And we're, and, and one of the other last thing that I'll say is that, one of the things we talked about also is that it, that the town could give out warnings. You know, if there's going to be a sweeping enforcement, you can get a warning. You know, here, you know, you know what, uh, summer, end of summer, that's it. Everybody's, you know, and then, and then you're going to start paying. So, so it's possible to do, you know, do it in a meaningful way.
And then not pay the full annual fee if you have to run in and buy some in September or whatever, right? Um, but one, one more idea, just throw it in the bucket.
Does it, does it work that way, though? You don't get prorated if you want it?
No, no, it's, it's, it's ridiculous. What about new, what about, well, yeah.
That's a great, I guess, a great soundbite, Stephen going, it's ridiculous.
No.
Go ahead and rub the bush.
I just, but one, uh, one idea, though, new businesses, maybe give them one free or a couple free for the first year, so they understand that they get used to it. They see where the, you know, and in, again, for long-term compliance.
Or, but once again, if you go back to my, my suggestion, you, the first one you buy, the second one gets reduced because you've paid full boat.
Right.
And so um.
There should be group discounts, like volume, volume discounts.
So, you know, you know, right. So, you know, so the first one is five hundred dollars, two to, two to, you know, two through five is X amount of dollars. And after, you know, if you buy five or more, it's, you know, so really to.
So three of the five districts um really have parking pass requirements. Morris Turnpike and Wyoming don't. Um, but when we looked at the data, eighty percent of the twelve hundred passes that have been purchased already this year are only for two categories, commuter and annual business. So we have ten different passes.
Right.
But only, people only buy two of them. So why do we have so many? Let's start improving the ones that we have, right? So like incentivizing parking in the deck or prorating. Um, Jesse and I had talked about um, maybe making it a month, there's a, you do a month to month for people that only intend to maybe, if they know they're only going to stay at a job for a couple of months, you know, because they're in retail or restaurant, why should they pay for an annual fee if they know they're never going to be here for two months? Um, because I think if we make these more accessible and we consolidate, we can then get more compliance, so.
And transferability. So like, as if you have a lot of employee turnover, you know, we buy, we buy them for our employees, but like when they leave, we're kind of stuck. It's like this weird clunky process.
Yeah, and there's also, it's like, it's very sort of like nineteen nineties where they give you a physical pass that you're supposed to give to each other.
Yeah, yeah. You have to scrape it off the window and turn in ripped shreds to prove that it's been removed in order to pay like five or ten dollars to have another employee use it. It's like literally Juliette. We brought literally pieces of ripped paper to say here, and then I said, okay, back.
We checked about that, though, changing it to like placards to hang from the roof.
But it, to me, it's like, it's twenty twenty-three, and we're like talking whether we should be using placards or not. I mean, it's like saying, am I going to take my horse to work today? Got it. We, we gotta do better here. Um, and so it's, it's a major concern for us as the Sid, because virtually every single one of our customers and business owners uses a car. We got to solve the problem. So. And just, just for housekeeping, this is a standing committee, this is uh, business advocacy, and so it's Richard, Jackie, and Ashley Schultz. Um, we're on that committee.
Speaking of which, Ashley, do you have anything you want to add to our uh lively, robust discussion?
Yeah, you know, y- you guys covered a lot of it. I mean, from my perspective as a property owner, and then also I have a business in town, too. I mean, one of the main things to me is, is to really make the barrier of entry easier for businesses that want to come to town. So you know, uh, making it easier for the first floor to be a service industry. Um, we, we have a lot of people in our building that would like to put, you know, service ideas um in there, and, and, you know, right now, they have to go for a variance. They're just not going to spend that. So I mean, you know, we, we compete with Westfield and Summit, and we lose a lot of people to them because of that. You know, the parking, all, all that, everything that you're saying, I agree with, and uh, just want to make it, you know, easier.
So I'll, I'll make this an ongoing report.
No, I think.
No, I think, I think we pretty much covered it. But maybe.
I'll coordinate with the net.
Yes, and I would think maybe you want to talk to uh to Alexa and Steve as our business owners and what, you know, what their input is as well, just from a, we, we had Ashley's, but um, I think that would be, you know, important to two different areas, two different needs. Interesting, both bakeries, but, but that, you know, but um, I think that would be helpful to.
And, and for general improvements in terms of getting ready for the holidays and signage, uh, if you wanted to set up another like uh, uh, meeting, then with finance committee, we could kind of talk about the budget and what we could do, you know, so.
Our final segment here, Steve, Main Street.
Sure. So I am happy to announce the Main Street Pedestrian Mall will be back June twenty-third, so that is uh, eight days from today. So we uh, that is a twenty-four-seven closure. So if you remember years prior, we had done uh Friday to Sunday is usually starting around Mother's Day, and then it was a full closure after school. We've abandoned the spring closures due to logistics and cost. Now it's just going to be a full closure from uh June twenty-eighth through Labor Day weekend, so September fourth.
Twenty-eighth through twenty-third.
I'm sorry, twenty-third, I apologize. Um, we have some exciting stuff uh in terms of, you know, really, this year, we're going to focus on increasing brand awareness. This is a giant two-month billboard for Explore Melbourne, and so um, we're going to have uh new A-frame signs detailing a lot of the um, programming that we have in the, in the uh mall. We're going to have uh new A-frame signs to point people towards businesses that are in other parts of the town. So, you know, go towards the bookhouse in Mariaggi, go towards um Teen Skin and Splurge, and um, we're going to work on, on how we're going to lay that signage out. Um, we're also going to have new uh new signage on the barricades, uh, on the interior side, obviously. Um, and that's going to have, uh, there'll be probably eight to ten um different those sort of stickers.
It's, it's like a decal that goes in the middle. Uh, other restaurants, you know, the town has done this, and we're use that to our advantage, because printing uh banners and other things, they, the wind just takes them right down. So these things are already in place on our.
So the concept will be something like our logo, and it'll say, does live music, our logo does public art.
Right.
And just give us an opportunity to explain what we do in a passive way. Um, there's going to be more public seating. One of the big things that we want to go for this year is to help uh not just the businesses in the mall, but other ones surrounding it. So we're going to now have uh, instead of two, we're going to have three picnic tables. We're going to add five wooden benches and end tables. Um, we're going to uh bring in high-top tables uh from the art alley. We're going to have uh two kid-sized picnic tables. We're going to have our chessboard back out. We have now two Connect Four boards and two giant agenda sets. Um, so there's a lot that is going to be in this space, and it's going to be great. And then the TC is considering at their next meeting uh restaurants to have the ability to essentially rent space in the mall uh through the um, uh, through the, the what is the word for it? Sidewalk. The sidewalk cafe license. So um, if you're a pizzeria and you're two blocks away, um, but you want to have the ability for your patrons to take a box of pizza and sit at one of your chairs, you can place those chairs that will be reserved for your customers, and then they can walk down. You can also do delivery. Um, so what we're going to be including in all the public seating is a list of all the restaurants in the town. One side of the page will be downtown, the other side will be the outer districts, and then uh folks can have a QR code that takes them to our website. So we really want to make this very inclusive of, of all five districts, although obviously it's a static physical location. So I think all things are great. We invite you guys to come out on June twenty-third. Uh, Friday night, we have an awesome jazz guitarist who's playing. It's going to be a lot of fun, so that music starts at six-thirty. You know, make your reservations if you can at different restaurants, um, but it's going to be a nice time. And then uh yesterday, I had a, our executive committee meeting, and we talked about, um, well, we talked about climate change is what we talked about. Um, and, and some of the concerns uh were parameters that we wanted to put in place concerning. Um and and some of the concerns uh were parameters that we wanted to put in place concerning the uh the outdoor area. So obviously, there was this strange smoke condition last week for girls' night out. We were forced to make a lot of changes and and I think it brought a new wrinkle to what we do in terms of outdoor events. So that spurred on a conversation that Michael, Steven, Tracy and I had. And then I said, you know, we really only have one uh outdoor event going on this summer, which is the pedestrian mall. We have thirty-five musical acts plus the Open Streets program, which is yoga, cycling, et cetera. Um and so the suggestion was let's put together some basic parameters related to concerning weather. And so it's on your agenda here and and um we'd love to have a discussion about this. We're thinking that if there's a situation where there's uh unhealthy, severe or hazardous air conditions, um and that's from the New Jersey D date, um that a decision would be made six hours prior to cancel event. If the temperature is above ninety-five degrees and there's a concern over heat, that a decision would be made twelve hours prior. And then if there are hurricane issues, um we'll have certainly a lot more lead time, um then a decision would be made twenty-four hours prior. So um if those, any of those three metrics are met, it's my responsibility to speak to the band or the other vendors and say, the event is postponed due to these conditions. Um the vendors will be paid fifty percent of their event fee if it's canceled because obviously they've blocked out that time. Um and then language would be included in all the band contracts going forward, explaining this. Um we do have a rain policy that's in all of our contracts. Um we, if we know a weekend is gonna be a washout, we let the bands know they don't get paid because they never leave the house. But um if they come and it's an on and off, on on again, off again storm, we tell them to wait one hour. Um if it doesn't clear, we do give them a portion of what they would have been paid. Um there are situations where a band is playing for two hours, storm rolls through, they can't complete their set, we pay them for the time uh that they spent. So unfortunately, this isn't, you know, a one plus one equals two situation because you're dealing with live entertainment and weather. Uh but I think this is a very sensible way of approaching um what tends to be now very unpredictable weather. So um I'll I'll pass it off to the executive committee if they wanna add anything. I I think this is good direction.
Yeah, I think uh what, and forgive me, I I was actually awake last week and all my uh observations of the storm clouds and fire clouds were from sunny Florida where the sky was clear. But but obviously it was a problem and something that we need to consider. And we were on the phone and texting each other, saying, you know, how do we handle this? Last week for Knowing Girls Night Out and hundreds of people and vendors and all those things and people, you don't wanna put at risk if you uh if you have the opportunity to keep everybody safe. And that's some of the thought here, um you know, what are the touch points for the summer? If it gets too hot, it might be a little tough for a band. You know, people are free to come and go as they please, but we have a little responsibility, we don't wanna create a scenario where people are at risk. So that was, this was what we came up with, I don't know if there's any other thoughts, um other conditions we may have missed. In rain is typical, but hurricane is obvious.
As I said, we do have a rain policy in place already.
Yeah, trying to set up objective criteria so we don't have that swirl ahead of time, like what do we do, what do we do? And I think it's almost a moral obligation to protect every, we can't support and encourage everyone to go outside if the air is hazardous, right? So it, you know, and I mean, I'm thinking about six hours because the conditions change very rapidly that one day, within out two hours. It was a surprise to everyone, so it, I'm not sure about that. I'm I'm also thinking about, I know it's too complicated, but like if it's ninety-five, ninety, there's a humidity factor. I mean, it could be oppressive if it's ninety and like huge humidity, you know, so like I think there still needs some flexibility, obviously. Um and then also, we're being awfully generous with this refund policy or the paying them anyway. So if we call it because there's a hurricane within twenty-four hours, are you suggesting we still pay them half?
That would be discussed yesterday, nothing is said.
Yeah, I know we do, I know we did talk about it, but this feels a little like if it's hazardous air, they should wanna go inside themselves like and I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't know if their busy schedule says, oh, we know you blocked the night, you know. I I think a little more thinking around that policy makes sense to me as well.
But the.
Uh yeah, well, but I I just have two things, the I I I think, I think you just said for for the music, I think you just said if if it's a six o'clock performance, I think you your cutoff time is two P M, so everybody knows at two P M of the the day of whether or not it's a yay or a nay. If the, it, I think that rather than four hours before, four hours before, what, the time that they're supposed to start, the time that they come to set up, what, you know, just have a whatever, because some may come earlier, some may come later. You just have a a time, a cutoff time, whatever it is, two o'clock, three o'clock, whatever. It's probably two o'clock because some of the bands are coming from long distances. I do think that in the scheduling, maybe we should hold a couple of rain date, like rain date rescheduled, like I know the township does for the uh the summer concert series so that we have some flexibility so that if, you know, you're, you know, and maybe, you know, you they have a June date and it's an August date and if the second date is canceled, then I I I understand that it's more in terms of scheduling and it's more complicated. But maybe, you know, you you say that this is the rain date for the entire schedule and they have that as a backup because the uh or or two or three nights to make it maybe that way a little bit more comprehensive. And if that rain date is raining again, then we pay them, so or something like that, if that's.
It's not just the performance, it's that you don't want your residents being encouraged to come out and risk getting hit by lightning, like like it's not, you you know, there's.
Yes, but particularly, but 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 these bands book the time and it like, you know, it's, it they they, there are some certain, they know, they're they're counting on that money for their livelihood and it's not their fault if it rains or it's not ours.
I mean, that's the thing, so I I wanna be fair, but these are conditions that are out of our control, too. So if we make the call around safety of of the audience members, the residents, I'm I'm not, I'm trying not to be too inflexible, obviously, but it it isn't our fault either. These things are pretty obviously dangerous for everybody involved, so.
I think, I think, I think the um the vendors need to be considered because this is part of their livelihood. We have a great DJ that comes to all of our events, this is what he does full-time. So I think if we, I would like to do a little more research about how other uh towns are handling this, towns are handling this. Because once we put that in a contract, it's in front of them, they may, they they make that decision whether they're gonna comply to that or they're not gonna work with us. But I I do think.
That's the thing and and.
Yeah.
Right, it may be dangerous outside, but maybe they could have booked someplace inside.
Yeah.
Right, no, that's right.
I mean, people are making a lot.
I don't wanna penalize them.
Yeah, but if people are traveling a long distance to come to us and they're and they're and they're part of our community or they're they're, you know, this is what they do, you know, we certainly don't wanna hurt them and, you know, you know, so it's a balancing act.
No, I agree. Yeah, exactly.
I also feel that people are coming to that closure, whether there's music or there's not. Because that closure is packed all summer long, whether there's music or there's no music, it's packed. So I don't see, I don't see the uh, I don't see us encouraging people to come out for performances because they're already there. You know, if they're gonna go out, they're gonna go out. I think the music is just in there and the entertainment is just in there and uh.
I'll tell you, I stay longer with this music.
Right.
And Jack.
The I, the other thing I feel really strongly about, I think we should set up a schedule and we should be introducing, it's our opportunity to, at six o'clock
Yep.
for ten minutes to say, welcome, this is, this event is sponsored by Explore Milburn Short Hills. The visit, I I mean, I think we really need to let people know that there is an organization and a commitment and a process and a policy and uh I'll sign up for the twenty-third.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll get it last year.
Yeah, for all, yeah, for all.
Yeah, I mean, we, but I think we should just really try, you know.
For all board members, you know.
For all board members, absolutely, and and our our subcommittees, they they, I mean,
Their subcommittees, yeah.
Everybody can have an opportunity to to be there.
Yeah.
You're not allowed to put signage on the outside of those, not for nowhere, just to, we meant to.
It's distracting also for drivers, you don't want them to be reading it when they need to do.
It's supposed to be.
Correct.
And Amanda, can I wanna ask you a question? We could, so with all the great events we're having, we're capturing a, we have a growing database. So are we gonna use that database to invite people to the town for, you know, for the closure and?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So for for the weekend?
I just had to get through through last week.
I know, I was, I was watching you work.
No pressure, no.
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to put more on your plate, I'm just saying, you know, from a marketing point of view, you worked, you have all this database of people that are coming.
Right, right.
You know, it'd be good to send them a reminder, yeah, but I I know you work here, you're doing a great job.
Well, I I hate to rain on everybody's parade. But we do have concerts scheduled um for eight days from now. So do we wanna have a decision at least on some basic parameters? Um so that at least I have some some marching orders. Do you think, I think Jackie's point is valid to say, if the music starts at six thirty, it's four hours back from that. Or, I mean, personally.
Right, the time might be easier than six hours, four hours, yeah.
It's the flat time.
Yeah, um.
Whether it's one o'clock, two o'clock.
Right.
I I I do think we just need to take into account, you know, especially because they're bands, you know, they're packing and prepping
Yeah, yeah.
many hours in advance and so.
Traveling.
And they're traveling, I mean, I would wanna know pretty far in advance if this is not gonna happen. Um so I'm even comfortable with twelve hours ahead or, you know, whatever it is, if it's gonna be.
I think that that.
Cause it can change.
Eight hours, I mean.
Yeah, things, these summer storms.
No, I would say noon.
You know, you have, you have two extremes, right? You have what happened last week.
Yeah.
Um then you just have a summer storm that may come in and out between two o'clock and four o'clock, it's.
Right, and we we've been very flexible, we move bands uh when we've, you know, I I text with them during the day. Um and they'll, you know, you know, there's a storm coming from two to four, well, you guys wanna play later on? Sure. And so we just move them back and and it works. Um so a lot of this is, you know, doing it on the fly, but if let, I think I'd like a baseline, if the if the number is four hours ahead of time, that's fine, I just want some direction.
You know, we could also leave it to your discretion, you know, your your.
Sometimes the weather, it it'll be more predictable, why don't we give you the, why don't you say between twelve and two? How's that?
Um, well, it doesn't work for Sundays because music starts at eleven thirty. Um because we do it in.
So do four hours before, do nine o'clock?
Four hours before, um you know, my discretion.
Right, four hours.
I'm trying to test the weather.
You won't have to worry about temperature for this weekend.
I I think this is similar to schools making decisions about snow uh closures.
Yeah.
Right.
I think sometimes uh we're gonna make a decision and it's gonna go the other way and we just have to be okay with it.
Yeah.
Cause there's, you can only control so much.
And and I don't think it's a fortune, I mean, every penny is always, we always wanna worry about every penny. But I think if if a mistake is made or weather changes suddenly, you know, it's not a, it's not a lot, it's not a lot of money.
I agree, I agree.
So do we wanna stick with a fifty percent event fee?
I I think it's fair, I all, I I hear what you're saying, I think it's more of a paying it forward as much as anything.
I don't think we can give them a rain date.
So we do have the option of rain dates because.
I think that we're booked for all the dates, yeah.
Right, we're we're booked, but things happen, bands cancel, um we could always slot people into Thursday nights.
Right.
You might be on the wrong, I mean, you might be on the wrong.
Yeah.
You know, we can slot them in for Thursdays, we can do a double header on a Saturday, you know, we can do an afternoon.
Although.
I can always make it work, so.
Although they're prepping and stuff, I I would say fifty percent.
And then we would just pay them the remaining fifty percent once they play on the rain date and then they're made whole, right?
Oh, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Right, so if you're gonna pay three hundred dollars, you get one fifty if you get canceled and then we reschedule.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
And encourage us then to return.
That's that's, that's great.
Right, and then 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 they were paid when they were gonna get paid.
If they want.
Yeah, if they want.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make that clear.
And I like the idea of like a pop-up on a Tuesday night or a Thursday night, and I'm sure, and you know, and.
Thursday nights.
Yes, Thursday nights are great.
We have one Thursday night booked, um.
Especially in the summer.
Yeah.
But as as these rain dates happen, if you should just start running out of days and you gotta start putting people on Thursdays and which can add to the fun of it, I guess. But thank you all.
If that's, so that's exciting, this Friday.
Yes.
Who's our uh entertainer? Uh right, a week from tomorrow.
Yes, uh the guitarist called Courtney Sappington. He has a, he's got an excellent couple albums that you can find on YouTube and it's guitar, jazz. Uh we're we're staying somewhat thematic this year, Fridays are gonna be kind of a more chilled-out vibe. I've scheduled bands that are more relaxed so that everyone can unwind on their Friday night. And then Saturday nights are a little bit more lively and then Sundays will be a little bit more family-friendly, so.
Um if you look at your Thursdays, the concerts in the park.
Yes.
Yes, just make sure that the schedule, right.
Right.
Except the first one, this one is this.
Right.
Okay, moving on, uh.
And and we're starting, oh, sorry, I didn't mean, and we're starting uh six, six o'clock, six thirty.
Six thirty on Friday.
Fridays are six thirty and what is, and Saturday?
Saturdays are six thirty and Sundays are one thirty if I recall.
I'll be there with you if you will.
Oh, good.
We can microphone it again.
Absolutely, you you got a date. Anybody else wanna join us? We'll be there.
Yeah, it's good fun. We go from table to table. It's quite a scene.
Don't tempt her.
I know, it's, listen, we've, we've, we've.
We've done that.
We've done it. Uh any other discussion, new business? Okay, uh public comments, when invited to speak, please come to the lecture and state your name. Speak into the microphone so you can be recorded, you will have three minutes to speak. Is anybody, I don't see anybody up there, am I right? Okay, so.
Jeffrey Feld, Short Hills, New Jersey. Yes, I wasn't here Thursday, but my reunion was almost canceled because of that disaster. Um Jesse, if you can go back and you can put on the public, the black line copy of the commercial solid waste ordinance, the the TC discussed it, but no one could find it, but I think it helped the business owners to see the black line ordinances of the changes. Um as to the Main Street pedestrian mall closure, um I just heard before about moral obligations. Tap into Milburn had to change their article three times. Originally, they wrote that it was only, the closure was only two days, the weekends, like in Bridgewood, rather than twenty-four seven. There's a question as to when use were pedestrian mall, the municipal attorney went out of pine as to what statute went on, whether you had to find safety, there's a question as to the effective date of this ordinance. Municipal attorney has never appined, you have two municipal attorneys here. Does it go immediately effective or you have to wait twenty days for notice of publication, which is today? So you might be holding an event pursuant to an ordinance that's not yet effective. Remember, there's another piece, because that's to the state, there's been no, made no request, no one knows if the state has approved it. I've not received any documents, the clerk has no documents. As to the bare properties, read the opinion. The opinion says if we win the case, the town has to pay us back the monies. Also, we're waiting as to the status, we're waiting for the judge to send us to mediation. Judge Moore said in April two thousand twenty-one, go to mediation, but the town decides to litigate. Spend more than a hundred thousand dollars on discovery that had no relevance to the case. Also, you might wanna look at an opinion that came out today by the appellate division. As to that motion, I requested oral, I had a right, as a right, that plane had to be heard according to the appellate division today. And two, when the opinion, the order was in, the reason should have been attached at that moment. So if I ever had to go back to the appellate division about what happened, that judge is gonna get spanked for what he did not do. Last Thursday, when you had um Girls' Night Out, Thursday was when you look as a historical day, many things happened that day. So I have a former president getting indicted. United States Supreme Court had a case, an out of bounds, not redistricting, about votes. One issue that's been here, so no one's ever approached, but you are appointed, you're not elected by the people, pay the taxes. That's an issue that has to be heard by the courts. And as it goes back to the audits, as to whether this is a controlled entity by the TC, because you're appointed, never elected as a law session, which differs from that. In addition, what we had, I can't make thirty seconds more.
Yeah, thirty seconds, sure.
Listen carefully by certain admissions that were made by the TC, the last TC meeting and prior by Mr. Wasserman. Mr. Vance, uh Vinnyak stated that Mr. Wasserman did not understand what he was approving. He said this as to two different legislations. Please be careful, you swap out moral obligations, do not discount what I said. It was today at the CDA meeting, I went to the June fourteenth, the June team matters. I've known all those people from N double A C P, we talked about it.
Thirty seconds, not not ninety seconds.
Thank you, thank you.
You could, you could wrap up.
No, just saying that a lot of times people discount what I've been saying. We've been having a, been, or Levecchio have been dealing with each other for like twelve years. Do not discount what I am saying as to the law.
Good evening, Vicky Powell, business owner. Uh first, I wanna uh chirp in about the parking.
Uh, first I wanna uh chirp in about the parking. I totally agree, I know Steve and I have had this discussion, I sent an email, Summit's now, um, increased their fees. They call it meter jumping also, when they, they leave their spot and go somewhere else. I also think it's important that when we have new businesses come into town, we educate them and tell them about the permits, cuz I know there are some businesses that are new in town that did not know this fact. So I think, I don't know if you give new businesses a packet on what's going on, I think it needs to be included in there because uh, you know, and it's not only that. And also, if they're doing construction in town, the construction vehicles should not be parking on the streets. I know I'm having that problem and I've addressed it with them and it's been fixed, but that's, it's a, it's a problem. It's, it's been a problem for thirty-eight years that we've been in business, so I definitely think that has to be addressed. But on a happy note, I just have to say, as a business owner and uh somebody who participated in Girls Night Out, yes, I was on the committee and everything, but it was such a wonderful event, it was well-organized and you guys made it happen, the business entity that gave us this uh, uh, event, sorry. Uh, so I just wanna thank you all for approving it and coming up with these ideas and doing these events for the business community, cuz it did help us. I had, I went around and I spoke to at least four to five different businesses and they all said, what a fabulous night it was. It was great to see everyone walk in town, they had great business, it was a great vibe. So we have to keep continuing to do this to bring businesses, the business uh into the town. I also have to say that I did get new customers, I had a lady from Madison that said, this uh Girls Night Out was fabulous, Madison cannot even compare to it. And it's a customer that I know I'm gonna get back. So I just wanted to thank you for keeping up and letting, uh, doing, being the business district for us. I also wanna thank Amanda, she worked so hard, the templates that she did for social media, she just, she just hit it out of the park. It was just, it was a pleasure to work with her, but she really did above and beyond, I mean, I can't thank her enough. I really can't, she really did an awesome job. And like she said, we now have the template for next year, so we don't have to really do much, we just have to go out. I'm sure we're gonna get more sponsors, I'm sure we're gonna get more swag bags, because it was just such a great event. So I wanna thank you and you too, Steve. But she really did uh the best, so.
I thank you.
Yeah.
I know, yes, we had a great committee and that's great, and that's what we should do. If you're gonna do events, reach out to merchants, I'm sure we'll be happy to help you. And you, there are only two people and you guys, you know, you guys have your, but these two are the ones that are here. So if you ask for help, I'm sure you will get more people to help you, because it was, I mean, everyone on the committee loved to do it. We are every Friday morning meeting, so, yeah, so if you ask, we can help, so, thank you.
Thank you, Vicky.
All right, uh, before we adjourn, just programming note. Uh, our next meeting is not until Tuesday, September twelfth, six-thirty P M. Uh, budget workshop, then we have Thursday, uh, oh, Tuesday, September twelfth, it's a Tuesday, there's something.
It avoids the Jewish holidays.
The holidays, yes, and then the following meeting will be Thursday, October nineteenth, our annual meeting at five thirty.
Now, I know I will not be at that annual meeting, is that, is that thing carved in stone, yes?
That date is carved in stone.
Okay, okay, I will.
Stone tablet.
Okay.
Um, all right, anything else before we have our customer?
If I could just have Stephen, Michael, Tracy and Lex stay for a few moments, we have to get a couple of dates on the calendar, yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.